No addendums, no. I forgot a pen. Does anybody have a pen that could borrow? Sorry. Thank you. Mute it.
Okay, great. No extra steps.
John, how you doing?
Good.
I like the steps. Looking good. Huh, how you doing?
Doing well, thanks.
Good, okay. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Those of you in the audience, thank you for being here. Those of you who are joining virtually, thank you very much for attending. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Here.
Mr. Clausen?
Here.
Mrs. Harold?
Here.
Mrs. Pericorio? Mr. Valley?
Here.
Mrs. Scharfstein?
Here.
Mr. Moscatello?
Here.
Mr. Hagaman?
Here.
Thank you. Sunshine Law Statement. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that within compliance of Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled, "The Open Public Meetings Act." Stanhope Board of Education, located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of this meeting. Stanhope's mission statement: The Stanhope School District will provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiatives, fosters success through teamwork, promotes accountability, demonstrates a passion for educational excellence, and ensures student achievement related to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The Stanhope School District is committed to the development of our students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved through their lifelong learning. That takes us to our presentations tonight. Mr. Hagaman?
All right. The first one will be brief but very meaningful. The board initiated a program quite a few years ago now called the We Are VRS Award, where members of the staff can be nominated by pretty much anybody, board members, other staff members, community parents, for doing something that's special that makes a difference. We received a nomination last week for Mrs. Karen Connolly, who's our world language teacher. The person who nominated her was just very appreciative of how she contributes to a positive staff morale and how supportive she is to others that are in need. The statement that was written is that Karen will randomly stop into the office with treats, coffee pods, specialty tea bags to brighten our day. It's really a lift, and I know that it comes from the heart. And she's quite known for, she knows somebody's going through a difficult time, being there for them and just kind of trying to lift their spirits. And it's definitely something that's known and recognized. It doesn't look like she could be here tonight, so thank you, Karen, and I'll find you in the morning to give you your little award. The next presentation that we have tonight is on the upcoming bond referendum vote. So if you don't mind, I'm just gonna jump up in just a second, advance the slide. Debbie and Gil, you just might need to move so that you can see. And I'm gonna try and get this lapel mic going, too.
Nick, do I need to move the chair? Okay. Sound check, Mr. La Lama?
What is that, the school?
Can you hear me? Okay. All right. So, thank you again for everybody who's here tonight in person and watching online on our YouTube channel. Not only are we broadcasting live, but all of our board meetings are recorded and posted to that link, and we'll have a condensed version of this specific presentation for the referendum put on the referendum website. For those of you who are so inclined with the QR codes, if you use the QR code at the top of this front screen, that'll bring you directly to information related to the referendum. It'll give you numbers, it'll give you the, it'll eventually give you the slides, it'll give you the presentation and some information about the projects that we're looking to move forward with. The vote is on December 13th at the Stanhope American Legion Hall. We encourage everybody, regardless of their persuasion and how they feel about this referendum, to vote. We feel as though it's our civic duty to, you know, in a democratic society, to come out and really share how you feel so that we can make accommodations and so that we can move these projects hopefully forward in a way that people want us to. The doors will open at six in the morning, will be open till eight o'clock at night, and there is also the possibility of voting by mail, and we have that information on our website as well. You'd have to go to the county clerk's website and, I believe, print the information that you need. Want to welcome some special guests. We have our architects, engineers here today, Anthony and Matthew Giafficaro. They're not gonna be up presenting formally, but they'll be available if anybody from the board has questions related to the specific projects, and I'm sure that they'd be happy to answer any questions from the public that are here tonight during the public session if you have any questions or comments. So, as I conclude the presentation, or even throughout the presentation, anybody from the board, please feel free to stop and ask questions. Questions from the public can be heard during the public session, which will be soon after the presentation. What a bond referendum is. The bond referendum is when our school seeks voter approval for additional funding to complete, in our case, facilities projects that can't be done within our regular operating budget. I'll get into some of the reasons why this is necessary for us to go out for referendum and do some of these projects. But more importantly, the question that might be asked is, why now? Why do we have to do this now? Why is this a good time for us? Number one, our existing debt service is falling off. And what that means is about 20 years ago, the town went out for, the board went out for referendum to complete some projects, the addition on each side of the school, and that 20-year period is now falling off, which means that you won't be paying any taxes on that debt. The timing, in our opinion, is perfect so that this potential debt would come on at the exact same time as the other debt would fall off. So nobody should see an increase, and I'll go through it in just a minute, you'd actually see a decrease in your taxes as estimated by Phoenix's advisors who are helping us through this process. The facilities renovations that we're looking to do right now are critical to the school. These are not, these would be nice things for us to move forward. We're talking major projects that will enhance the safety and security of the building, but also keep it looking clean and feeling clean and looking nice for the community. So, why the bond referendum? I've highlighted three reasons here. There's obviously many more that we can discuss. The first one, I talked about the renovations. We pride ourselves on keeping a safe and clean environment for our kids. For the most part, if you walk the building, it's clean. We're doing everything that's within our power. But there are things that are without, that are outside of our power right now. The roof is a perfect example of it. Although we bring people in to repair the roof as needed, it's at the end of life. And we have leaks, and we have water on the floor, which isn't safe. And we have damp ceiling tiles, which also isn't safe. It doesn't contribute well to the air quality within the building. Those are, that's just one example of something that needs to be done. The second reason is, we're going to get money for these projects if we go out for referendum. If we try to finance these projects on our own, we will not be given any state aid. So the state will pay 34% of our total cost back to the taxpayer, which will reduce the cost of the overall project. All of our projects qualify. If you're gonna put up a brand-new school or put up an addition, those are examples of projects that wouldn't qualify. All the projects are renovations that we're looking to do, so we would qualify for the full 34%. And third, the reason we need to now is because we just can't finance these projects through our regular operating budget. Two reasons. The 2% cap is not, is not enough to cover all of the additional expenses each year. So, to put an example, our greatest expense as a school district are salaries and health benefits, both of which are increasing by more than 2% every year. However, we can only increase the tax levy by 2%. So what does that mean? We have to take money from elsewhere. We have to take money from different areas of our budget to make sure that we're paying these health benefits and we're paying for these salaries. The other thing that's working against us is that we have had money ultimately siphoned from us through state aid. The S2 state aid cuts has taken more than $2 million cumulatively from us, and we're still expecting at least three more years of cuts. Every year we've been cut, we have not cut programs, we have not cut staff. We've found unique and interesting ways to generate revenue. We've built programs that have generated revenue, and that's allowed us actually to increase staff to better support students during these aid cuts. But unfortunately, not enough to be able to fund all the projects that we need to get done. Anybody from the board, please feel free to stop me if you have questions midway, okay? List of the projects, the first is HVAC throughout the entire building. I'm gonna show some pictures of the, of the current aesthetics and the current equipment that we have. It's not to bring negative attention to our school, 'cause I have so much pride in this building, but it's to bring to your attention the areas where we need to improve, the areas where we need to focus. And I'll show you some pictures of the HVAC. If you've been in the building during the daylight, you'll see, out front, we have window unit air conditioners. They're not efficient, they're not necessarily safe. It was a temporary, a temporary situation to make sure that our kids and our staff aren't working in unhealthy conditions. But I'll go through the benefits of that shortly. I talked about the roof replacement, the need there, blacktop resurfacing, and the blacktop that I'm talking about is outside of the gymnasium, the basketball courts. We recently, within the last four or five years, had our parking lot redone, so we are in good shape there. Media Center renovation. So the media center, as you know, it is typically a library. We have some offices in there, we have copy machines in there, but that is a space that we know we can use more productively for our students so that they can engage in 21st century academics. The middle school science lab has pretty much original furniture, original cabinetry. It lacks storage, it lacks our teachers' ability to access electricity for demonstrations, it lacks a demonstration area. These are some things that we're looking to implement. Technology infrastructure. We have brand-new boards in the classrooms, that was all funded through the ESTER funds. We have brand-new equipment, we have brand-new Chromebooks. We just brought in a fiber line to improve the quality and connectivity throughout the building. The problem is, the current equipment that we have in the building, it's limiting the speed, it's limiting the reliability, and until we update that, we're gonna continue to experience slow, slow internet service, slower-than-wanted internet service, and some dead spots, for lack of a better term, throughout the building, as Mrs. Binnear shakes her head. The boiler, boilers are operating okay right now, could be much more efficient, but we are nearing end-of-life, and that is a pretty big project, so that's something we'll get into a little bit also. And restroom renovation. And again, we've, we've been pretty thorough in identifying these projects and figuring out what they're gonna cost. We're not looking to completely gut these restrooms, we're not looking to rip out tile, we're looking to do what's needed, and what's needed is stalls, toilets, sinks, urinals, the things that are beginning to deteriorate, not the things that are already in good shape. So we talked about HVAC, the heating and ventilation and air conditioning now throughout the entire building without window units. Most of the current vents that we have in this school were installed in 1965. 1965. They're actually, they were manufactured in 62, right? We checked the dates on the units. Again, they're working, but they don't longer make parts for them, so once they begin to break, we're gonna be in a difficult spot, and it's very difficult to find people that service them. We've been able to get by having our own people service them, but again, it's becoming more and more challenging as they get older. The new units would be more efficient, more cost-effective, they would improve the quality of the air throughout the school. And again, I'm gonna emphasize for all of our kids and our staff that are listening, air conditioning throughout the entire building is what we're looking for. This will also increase safety of the window units. Again, the window units were temporary. It's not difficult, if you wanna gain access to this building, by kicking out a window unit. We're very much aware of that. We wanna fix that, we wanna make sure that the air is more efficient, we also wanna improve the safety of the school. So, you can see from the exterior to the upper left, that's the window unit. From the interior is the window unit, and that's one of our dated units to the right. Roof replacement. Again, it, it, oh, I'm sorry, question?
Just for clarification, so the HVAC unit will be a central AC for the entire school, right?
Yes. And I don't know if Mr. Giafficaro would like to add anything to that, you know? No, why don't we wait until we get a little further on, and then if you want, you jump up there. So the roof, it pains me to put these pictures in these slides, but at the end of the day, like I said, this is out of our control. We, we can't fix the roof on our own, and we bring in professionals to fix our roof, and they do the best that they can, but ultimately, they say, the roof needs to be replaced. So we're actually spending money on repairs that are temporary repairs, and we're continually having leaks. So these are just a few of the ceiling tiles throughout the school where we see this, and then we replace them, and then it gets wet again, and then we replace them. And honestly, it's at a point where we really can't keep up right now. And we're going through ceiling tiles like crazy. This is some views here of the actual roof. You can see the puddling on top, that was after a couple days of not having any rain. You can see some of the areas that have been repaired over and over and over by the roofers. By also replacing the roof, the sections of the roof, we're also improving efficiency for our heating and cooling. So, again, that's another added benefit that can hopefully lead to long-term cost savings. This is our blacktop, the basketball court that's outside. You know, some might argue that this isn't a necessary fix, but for the safety of our students, the safety of the people that use it, if you walk out there in the daylight, you'll see, there are tripping hazards everywhere. If you walk out there at the night, I highly recommend that you wear a helmet, because you're gonna trip, because you won't be able to see these cracks. Our students use this on a daily basis. Even when the weather's not wonderful, if they can't go outside into the grass, they'll do blacktop-only recess. I know, because I'm here often late, that others within the community use it for, to play basketball, they use it for other types of recreation. I've seen kids learn how to ride their bikes on this area. It's, it's important that we make it safe for the kids and for the community, and honestly, when those weeds grow in those cracks, it's impossible to keep up with also. So, again, one of the, one of the few projects that we're looking to, to have during this presentation. The media center, we spoke about that a little bit earlier. The media center is ultimately our library. I don't wanna take the library component away from it, but at the same time, we need to engage our students in 21st century learning. So what do we see, what do we foresee in a media center, a STEM lab like this? We see a green room so that our students can learn how to broadcast. We see a robotics section, we see new technologies so that they're not just using the Chromebooks that they have with them every day, but getting them accustomed to using Apple products, getting them accustomed to using, was it CAD software?
Yes.
Advancing in our engineering program. We don't have curriculum-driven for this yet, but this is something that, if the referendum passes, will be a top priority, to take the curriculum that we have, build it and enhance it so that we can then prepare our students for the jobs of their future, prepare them to then go into lenapee with a leg up on maybe some other students. Maybe they can avoid that prerequisite into their STEM programs so that they can take the more advanced classes at the end of their high school career. These are some of the things that we're looking to do. These are renderings that were done by the Giafficaros, we appreciate that. This is computer-generated, this is not exactly what it would look like, but it's an idea of what we can do with the space. We see the space as a showcase for the school, something that's going to energize our students, something that's going to get them excited about coming here every day and knowing, I have STEM today, I get to go to the innovation lab, or my science teacher said that we're going to be working on a project, we're gonna be using the 3D printers, okay? These are things that other students in other districts are experiencing right now, and ours are not. And it's not fair to our kids to not have these opportunities. This is the science lab that I spoke about. Our science teacher's wonderful, he makes the most out of it, but as you can see, it's quite dated. That furniture, those cabinets are original, and they're falling apart. He has a difficult time with storage, because as you can see in the lower-right picture, it's all handmade storage cabinetry with two-by-fours and plywood. Again, not really safe, not really clean, but we're trying to make the most of it. Again, just like the media, the media center, the potential innovation lab, STEM lab, we're looking for this to be a place where students are excited to come. They're already excited about the experiments, they're already excited about what Mr. Morrissey is doing in this classroom. We wanna provide an opportunity for them to feel comfortable in that space and for him to be able to do some more. A new demonstration area is something that, you know, would be preferred as well. We talked about technology, infrastructure, looking at the pictures from your left to your right. That's a picture of the core switches. It's funny, I, I put that picture in here, but the brand-new ones are gonna look almost the same, they're just going to be updated, and they'll allow us to have faster speeds and greater reliability of our network. The access points, you see, you know, one sitting there and one on the ceiling, it's twofold, they're, they're at end-of-life. We brought fiber in, we've increased the speed, but that's like the choking point right there. We can only go as fast as these access points will allow us to. So by replacing the access points, we'll have, we'll really feel the speed that that fiber network, that dedicated fiber network, is going to provide for our students and staff. We talked about making the most out of, out of what we have here. So, we haven't been able to expand outside of this building, we're not looking to build a new building, we're not looking to add additions. What we've done is, we've made the most of the space that we have. We've turned closets into offices, we've turned large closets into speech therapy classes, we're using classrooms for OT and PT so that they're not having to go up on the stage or work in the hallway. A lot of those spaces, when these Wi-Fi, when these access points were put in almost 10 years ago, we didn't need any Wi-Fi, so we wouldn't put an access point there. Well, now we need it, now we have people working there, they have wireless devices, and they don't have internet. They have to go into the hallway, because that's the only place that they can get a connection. We need more access points, we need faster access points. These are all things that, again, to do within our regular operating budget, we might be able to do some of a project here and some of a project there, but I think most of you would agree, these are all projects that need to happen in the very, very near future. Excuse me. I mentioned the boilers. The boilers right now are in pretty good shape, we've had them serviced, they're working. I don't know how efficient they are, I don't believe they're super-efficient, but planning for the future, we know that this is a project that's gonna have to get done, and it's an extremely expensive project. So this is a project, too, that we would wait, if the referendum passes and we plan these projects out, this is one that we would wait to the end. Why replace a boiler if you can get two or three more years out of it? Let's wait two or three more years and replace it, and you get, get more time out of it there. If the referendum passes, we don't need to take the money from the bonds and spend it immediately, right? We can spend it over time. We, we also understand that there's a possibility that natural gas can be coming into the town of Stanhope. If that's the case, that's something we also would want to explore and potentially replace the current boilers that are running on oil with more efficient boilers that are running on natural gas. A little finicky, I apologize. I think it actually broke. Oh, there we go. Restroom renovations, as I said, we are not being irresponsible in the projects that we're looking to move forward and, and the cost of these projects. It would have been very easy to say, let's completely gut and renovate the bathrooms, but the thing is, they're actually in pretty good shape. It's our stalls, it's our sinks, it's our urinals and toilets that really need to be replaced. And when you're considering all of the public restrooms that we have and the faculty restrooms, it's, again, it's quite a project. It's something that we can build into this bond referendum, again, keeping taxes below where they're currently at and have all of these things done for our staff and our students. So these are, this is the total list of the projects and the estimated cost. I apologize if it's difficult to see, like I said, this is all posted already on the referendum website, if you haven't already seen it, and this presentation will also be posted there. The total cost in the right column not only includes the estimated cost of the project, it includes the 6% engineer and architect fee, the 1% bonding fee, and I believe there's an 8% contingency in there. So again, if we don't need the total amount of money, we're not going to use the amount of money. We also can't go over what the, what the question is asking for. We will be very responsible in how we plan out these projects and how we spend. The first you'll see, I didn't show any pictures of, is the faculty lounge. And why might that be a project that we're looking to do? Because we have a lot of wasted space. The faculty lounge is in the back corner, back there, behind that door, and there's a lot of wasted space that we'd like to build into that, that lounge so that we can take... These are all things that, again, to do within our regular operating budget, we might be able to do some of a project here and some of a project there, but I think most of you would agree, these are all projects that need to happen in the very, very near future. Excuse me. I mentioned the boilers. The boilers right now are in pretty good shape. We've had them serviced, they're working. I don't know how efficient they are, I don't believe they're super efficient, but planning for the future, we know that this is a project that's gonna have to get done and it's an extremely expensive project. So this is a project too that we would wait, if the referendum passes and we plan these projects out, this is one that we would wait to the end. Why replace a boiler if you can get two or three more years out of it? Let's wait two or three more years and replace it and you get more time out of it there. If the referendum passes, we don't need to take the money from the bonds and spend it immediately, right? We can spend it over time. We also understand that there's a possibility that natural gas can be coming into the town of Stanhope. If that's the case, that's something we also would want to explore and potentially replace the current boilers that are running on oil with more efficient boilers that are running on natural gas. A little finicky, I apologize. I think it actually broke. Oh, there we go. Restroom renovations, as I said, we are not being irresponsible in the projects that we're looking to move forward and the cost of these projects. It would have been very easy to say, let's completely gut and renovate the bathrooms, but the thing is, they're actually in pretty good shape. It's our stalls, it's our sinks, it's our urinals and toilets that really need to be replaced. And when you're considering all of the public restrooms that we have and the faculty restrooms, it's, again, it's quite a project. It's something that we can build into this bond referendum, again, keeping taxes below where they're currently at and have all of these things done for our staff and our students. So these are, this is the total list of the projects and the estimated cost. I apologize if it's difficult to see, like I said, this is all posted already on the referendum website if you haven't already seen it, and this presentation will also be posted there. The total cost in the right column not only includes the estimated cost of the project, it includes the 6% engineer and architect fee, the 1% bonding fee, and I believe there's an 8% contingency in there. So again, if we don't need the total amount of money, we're not going to use the amount of money. We also can't go over what the question is asking for. We will be very responsible in how we print out these projects and how we spend. The first you'll see, I didn't show any pictures of, is the faculty lounge. And why might that be a project that we're looking to do? Because we have a lot of wasted space. The faculty lounge is in the back corner, back there behind that door, and there's a lot of wasted space that we'd like to build into that lounge so that we can take equipment out of the media center, like the copiers that the teachers are using consistently, and place them into the lounge. So that that's a centralized location where teachers can make their copies and they can prepare for their day without having to walk in and out of the media center and disrupting classes and disrupting the students. You know, when your favorite teacher walks in during STEM class, it's real easy for kindergartners and first graders to get all excited when they see them, but that's not great for the STEM teacher who now has to reengage five and six-year-olds into what they're doing. So we want to minimize those distractions so that we can use that space to its greatest potential. We talked about the STEM lab and the media center, toilet room upgrades, outdoor basketball resurfacing, HVAC, the rooftop units which is intertwined with the HVAC to help with the air conditioning throughout, controls so that we can control these units remotely, the boilers, roofing, the science room, the technology upgrades, all things that we've discussed here tonight. The election costs come in just over $21,000, that's how much it costs to run a special election, and there's minimal, just under $4,000 in fees for the Department of Education. So the most important question, how is this gonna impact you as the taxpayer? As I stated, if you consider the current debt service falling off, even if this passes, your tax bill should be less per month and per year than it is right now. The estimated amount on an average tax assessed home of $192,000 is under $200 a year, which is just under $17 a month. I believe the previous average amount on the last debt service was around $220 a year. So this is coming in less. It should be anywhere from $15 to $25 less per year on an average assessed home of $192,000. It's important to note that this is the tax assessed value of your home, it's not the current value of your home. Because of the market right now, your homes are worth a heck of a lot more than the tax assessment. So whatever you get on your little tax card, that's what you would expect to be paying on your taxes. I mentioned the 34% reimbursement, I can't stress that enough. That is one of the reasons why so many districts actually go out for referendum, even if they don't need to go out for referendum. They try to grab that money, do the project, and then pay off the project. That's not unfortunately the case for us. We do need the referendum in order to complete these projects, but it is nice to get that additional 34% in our pockets and back to the taxpayer. And also that although we know that interest rates for mortgages are going through the roof right now, because this is a nonprofit situation, they're still pretty low for us. We have an estimated interest rate of 4.5%, although our financial advisors believe that it's likely that we would get a lesser percent in the four range right now, which would actually, again, bring down the estimated cost of the bonds. Questions before we move on?
No, just a quick comment on the taxes. Just make sure we understand that the decrease is on the debt service and that tax will be lower, but the total, the total school budget is gonna have the 2% increase to it.
Correct.
So the total school budget would be slightly lower.
You're gonna have your 2% tax levy.
But it's just the debt service.
Correct. The debt service is less than what you would pay.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification. Anyone else before we move to the next slide? So as I said, American Legion, December 13th, 6 to 8. I know that you can't read it from the audience right now, those of you who are viewing at home can read it because it's right there on your screen. That is the language that is within the actual question. Please feel free to review it. I encourage you to review it before you go to the voting booth so that you know exactly what you're either saying yes or no to. And the last piece before I entertain questions from the board is to encourage anybody, if you have a question that's either not answered tonight or that you think of after you leave today, that QR code and the link above that says referendum questions will bring you to a Google form, a survey where you can submit questions to me and to the board so that we can then generate, our plan is to generate a working FAQ document where we'll take your questions, we'll answer them in writing, we'll post them, and as we have more questions, we'll continue to answer those questions so that you have access to them all the time. If you submit and if you include your name and contact information, we'll obviously do our best to also get back to you personally with your questions, but if you have a question, it's likely that many others from the community have that same question and we want to be able to share it with everybody. So again, the QR code will bring you to that survey. You can email me directly, you can email anyone here directly. We also created an email account, referendum2022@stanhopeschools.org that you can email any questions or comments or concerns about. Anybody from the board with questions? Do you guys have anything you'd like to add before questions? Okay? And as I said, anybody from the public that has questions, once we get to the first public session on agenda items, that'll be your opportunity to come to the podium. We just ask that you turn the mic on and it won't project here, but that's what everybody at home will be able to hear. Once we get to public session, like five minutes probably. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our next section, which is correspondence. Anybody with questions on correspondence, the letter from the county superintendent on the virtual plan? Anybody have any questions or comments?
On the virtual plan, I was asking, so we are, so does that mean that we will be able to do virtual classes after three days of the school being closed?
So in order for us to be eligible to have any potential virtual instruction, it is required that we have a plan approved. This approval of the plan is also required for us to accept and spend any of the federal funding that we've gotten. So it was quite important that we create the plan with the hope that we'll never have to use it.
Was your answer, was your question answered about the three days? Because I didn't...
Yes, I know that the plan, so the plan was approved, but my question is really, for the 180 days, because I know we can count some of the remote instructions as part of the 180 days that we need. Does that happen after the school is closed after three days?
Yeah, so the school has to be closed for three days due to COVID in order for us to then go to a virtual learning platform and for the days to count. So I can't say next Wednesday, for whatever reason, we're gonna be virtual, the day will not count because it's not three consecutive days and it's not because of a reason related to COVID.
Gotcha.
Is it only COVID if we had a severe storm and we were closed for four days?
I think that they are, the Department of Ed is making exceptions, they're starting to at least, but my understanding is that as of right now, it's for COVID-related closings.
Anyone else with questions? That takes us to superintendent's report.
Okay, I'll try to be brief because I'm sure you're all tired of listening to me talk at this point. Our HIV and suspensions, we had two investigations this past month since our last meeting, one of which was founded, one of which was unfounded. We had one student serving in school suspension for one day. I want to take a moment to mention our veterans' recognition program that we had last Wednesday before the long weekend. I felt, again, it was a wonderful program that was very well-attended. I want to thank our students and our staff for all the preparation of the hallways. If you haven't had an opportunity, feel free after the meeting or when you leave to walk down a couple of these hallways and see all the decorations and the different ways that our students and staff are honoring our veterans. Lenape Valley for allowing their band and choir students to come down and perform for us. Mr. La Lama setting up our live broadcast. For the first time ever, our parents and everybody in the community can actually see the event outside of the school. So when the kids come home and talk about it, you have the opportunity, if you haven't done so already, go to our YouTube channel and you can see the entire Veterans Day program. The broadcast was actually quite impressive and I want to thank Mr. La Lama for putting that together. Thank you especially to Mrs. Yonkai Cathy for pretty much coordinating everything. Veterans Day is her program. She pushed through some personal adversity this week and I don't think that we missed a beat. So thank you Cathy so much for coordinating the event and supporting so many of us that were involved. And most importantly, thanks to our veterans for attending. I think we had in the neighborhood of 25, 26 veterans that were able to attend, many of which family members of students, former students, former students here, and just some others within the community that enjoy our program and they keep coming back year after year. My next item is our staffing update. We're currently short four paraprofessionals, which is pretty much where we've been now for the better part of a month. We are currently seeking a shared speech pathologist. We had a resignation. This is an individual that spends half of the time here at Valley Road School and half of the time up at Lenape. We share services with them to assist with the cost of recruit positive and quality personnel who are looking for full-time work, but also to improve the continuity from students receiving services here at the high school and then progressing up into, here in the elementary school and progressing up to the high school. In the last piece, we just received a letter of retirement from one of our evening custodians, so we're also looking for a full-time evening custodian beginning in January. So those are the current staffing needs that we have here in the building. Parent-teacher conferences for the first time ever were held as a hybrid. I think that they were successful, I think that they were very well-attended. It was a bit unique to not see as many people coming through for conferences because I think there was a good number of people who attended virtually, but it was nice to, for the first time in a while, welcome parents back for in-person conferences and have the building open. It's the first time we've done it since the beginning of COVID. Quick announcement that the governor's educator of the year, teacher of the year, and educational specialist of the year nomination is due by tomorrow now, tomorrow at noon. If you would like to nominate somebody, forms went out through email today, please send your nomination to Principal Decataldo and she's gonna be meeting with the nomination committee, I believe, or the selection committee tomorrow afternoon. We have so many great teachers and great support staff here in the school, it's always nice to be able to recognize them come the end of the school year. And the last piece that I have here is that we now have scheduled dates for our overnight trips. Our sixth grade students will be doing a single night at Fairview Lakes YMCA up in Stillwater. It's a great trip. We were able to go again last year after a couple of years of not because of COVID. We actually had sixth, seventh, and eighth grade go last year because the seventh and eighth graders had missed in their sixth grade year. This year is just sixth grade, May 4th and 5th, which is a Thursday night, I believe, into Friday, and we have a combined seventh and eighth grade trip that will be attending Washington DC, driving through Gettysburg and spending a few hours there, which is another really great trip that we haven't done in several years now. It's the first time we're combining seventh and eighth grade for an overnight. The reason for that, there's a couple of main reasons for that. Number one, cost, the more students we have, the less expensive it is for the parent to send the kids. All of them will fit on a single bus, which significantly reduce costs, I think, by almost $150 a student. But also for the continuity of our school day. Having two separate trips significantly disrupts, you know, the classes. We have staff that need to go on the trips for chaperone purposes. So we'll see how it goes this year and we'll reevaluate for next year and see what's gonna work best. That is June 7th through 9th, a little bit later in the school year this year. And that is everything in my report. If anybody from the board has any questions.
Anybody with questions or comments?
No.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, that takes us to our business administrator's report. Deb?
Well, this is an unofficial recording of, but we will be formally congratulating and recognizing some new board members come January. Ms. Harold was back on our board, which we're happy to have. Mr. Najib Ifcatar is also going to be on the board and Mr. Matt Velardo, so congratulations. And as well as Mr. Valley will be here for another two years, so thank you guys for that. It is shocking that budget season is back here again. I feel like it just ended, but here we are and we'll be talking about an actual, the school year official calendar as through ASBO, which is the Association for School Business Officials, has definitive timelines, that's out and that is attached to this board. But come January, when the new board is sworn in, we'll put out a budget calendar for the committee to meet then. Also, the tentative dates for the Board of Education meeting calendar are also on an attachment. Comprehensive maintenance plan, it is something that we have done, everybody does every single year, it has to go into the county, and it really is just an outline of what you do facilities-wise and maintenance-wise and the cost for that. Interestingly enough, we were just talking about it today at one of our meetings and they have had the, there's a formula that you plug in and it is based on a square footage of $143, and that has been based for, I can't tell you how much, since I've started as a BA. And I can assure you with our architect sitting there, they can tell you that it costs way more than $143 a square foot, so they are attempting to correct that to be more in line. And last but not least, certainly not least, our Linden Avenue update. We have sold the building, it is official, and so congratulations to everybody involved and congratulations to the new owners. They are putting in a preschool and we welcome them to our community.
Final Linden Ave update.
That is the final Linden Ave update.
Closed and check is in the...
From your lips to God's ears.
Check is deposited.
And the check is deposited, that's right.
Awesome, awesome.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Anybody with questions?
No.
No, I'd just like to thank Deb for her persistence and she was the edge of the spear on that project and it's been three years, right?
More than that.
Three years and actually trying to sell it, you know what I mean, and bringing closure to it. And actually, the process went smoothly, there wasn't a hiccup in it, and that's thanks to your due diligence on everything, making sure the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed on all the paperwork, et cetera, so. It's a great benefit for the school. We got money back on the building and it's a great benefit to the town because the organization that purchased it is for profit. So that property now goes on the tax rolls. It had been off the tax rolls ever since it was a school, now it's on the tax roll. So the community won out real well on that situation. Anybody else? Anybody have any comments?
I actually would like to add to what you just said. I realize that we just deposited a large check and this was coming on the heels of Mr. Hageman just talking to you about a referendum and how we need money. The building was, so I want to make sure that everybody understands that the building was sold for $331,000. We were thrilled to get that. As Mr. Hageman said in the beginning of the referendum conversation, our funds have been cut by S2 for a couple of years. We've been bringing, having intuition, students come in to, you know, one, most importantly, for their education, the education that the teachers here provide for them, but it really does do a great benefit as to bringing in revenue for the district. At the beginning of this, and so we're kind of, we're doing well, but at the beginning of this school year, we did have a couple of students that needed to have out-of-district placement, and with out-of-district placement also comes transportation. I always set aside money in the budget for that. It was not the same amount of money that we actually need. So luckily, the stars have aligned and that money is offsetting the out-of-district tuition and transportation costs. So we're happy to say that we've kind of dodged a bullet in that regard, but that money, as much as I would love to put it to offset the cost of a referendum, it's not where we actually need it. We need it to educate our kids. So thank you for letting me throw that in there.
Okay. Any, have I already done? Okay, let's move on to our committee reports. First is Personnel, Curriculum, School, Climate, and Culture Committee. Mrs. Harold?
I was not able to be at that meeting unfortunately.
Okay, I have my thing here. Okay, during that Personnel Committee, we discussed the superintendent's ability to appoint personnel and issue contracts through the next board meeting date, and then we will... appoint personnel and issue contracts through the next board meeting date and then we will retroactively approve them. And that's necessary, especially when you're trying to hire Paris. We don't want to wait a whole month in order for that person to start so Steve would be able to hire that person and then we would approve them retroactively. There was an appointment for Mrs. Karen Connolly to Diversity Club. There was an appointment for Candace Smith to the library stipend position. There was an improvement of Nick Halama as the broadcast coordinator. And we wanted to approve the appointment of Ilva Martinez. And it's, that was for a classroom paraprofessional. Sebastian Cabin Cashman, excuse me, as a substitute teacher and aide. Retroactively approved the resignation of Brian, how we put that one there? Hissiano? Hissiano, effective October 21st, 2022. And approved the request for observation of Mrs. Fair and Mrs. Morrisley by a student from the County College of Morris. At the school climate and culture, we did discuss the, some issues on the grievance, on a grievance, and that was taken care of. And we discussed the nomination of Mrs. Karen Connolly as the ERVS nomination. All those are on the, give me a second. The agenda and for your approval tonight. Anybody with questions? Okay, that takes us to Business Services, Facilities, and Technology. Matia?
Yep, I actually have nothing left to report. Debbie covered it all.
So, you're...
That whole committee was everything she talked about.
Yeah. Okay, then we are done with that committee report. Policy, John?
Policy, there was, there were no new policy items this month.
Okay. That takes it to the next item, which is Sussex County Ed Services. That is my report. I can say it's been a busy month since the last meetings. Sussex County, I was able to attend two committee meetings and we had our annual board meeting. We were looking for a principal since the beginning of school and we advertised and we had a committee. We went through the applications. We had one round of interviews, then we had a second round of interviews with three, with five people. And then we had two finalists and we selected a principal, all of which took probably the better part of six or eight weeks to get it done. Offered the person the position. They said they would take it and two days before a board meeting, that person changed their mind. That really caught us off guard, although I do understand that happens when you hire good people. There is always a chance that their current employer doesn't want to see them leave and that's exactly what happened. Their current employer offered them a better position at a, at a much better salary, so they decided to stay in their current position. What that does, it puts us behind the eight ball now. We're back at square one. Fortunately, we did have applications and we did have some very good candidates. So, at this point, they're reviewing it and calling back for some interviews and hopefully we'll be able to hire at our December meeting. We've been out, we've been without a principal since May 15th. The principal went on leave and then ended up resigning towards the late August and that's when we started our principal search. Programs are operational, enrollment is strong, and our project search at Newton Hospital is going extremely well. Kids are doing great and the hospital is thrilled with their, with their performance. Anybody with questions about Sussex Ed? Okay, next is my president's report for here. Again, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Attended the three committee meetings, attended the Veterans Day celebration. I gotta tell you, if you ever get a chance, it's a wonderful, wonderful experience for, it brings back a sense of a very strong community, a hometown feeling and a general respect for those who served. Wonderful hour and a half, two-hour programs and I could tell you, it was greatly appreciated by the veterans and a couple of times you could see almost some of them getting choked up, you know, and, just one little funny narrative, little story there. I was at the front door when a Korean War veteran was coming in and he was using a walker. And I helped hold the door for him and there's a girl who greets each veteran that she comes in and she says, the first thing she said to him is, "I thank you for your service." And he said, "Well," he said, "I didn't volunteer." He said, "I was drafted." And then he turns to the little girl and he says, "You probably don't even know what that means, do you?" And when you think about it, I don't think that child ever heard of that word, drafted, you know what I mean? I just thought it was a unique moment to see at a, an event like that. What was also unique this year, we were able to broadcast it to the community and it is on YouTube. And I don't know if anybody saw it, anybody would like to see it. It's archived on there and you'd be able to go and take a look at that. It was a wonderful time, wonderful day.
As of about an hour ago, Mr. Alama shared that we've had 250 views on it.
Oh, that's awesome. Good, good.
About 100 of our last board meeting.
Nice. Myself, along with several other board members, I attended the workshops at New Jersey School Boards Convention in Atlantic City. I thought it was wonderful. Went through a lot of workshops, picked up a lot of information, a lot of which I feel would come back. I know I had a conversation with Mr. Giacchiaro especially about the difference between the oil-fired furnaces and the gas-fired furnaces. And now that gas is coming through, through, even though we do have a debacle along Brooklyn Road here, and probably in two years or so, we will be able to connect in to gas. I attended a town council meeting to discuss the referendum with the council. This past week, I spent a couple of hours going door-to-door with our pamphlets, trying to discuss the referendum with the local people. I have to say, people are very respectful and most of them agreed that our referendum is focused on what we should be spending the money on and that is doing the upgrades and doing the STEM lab and, you know, things like your house. You know, there are things you have to do to maintain it and you need to do to make it run. So, I thought it went extremely well. I also attended a meeting with school officials, Brian McNeely and the representatives of the gas company to go over what was going to happen on Brooklyn Road, how that was going to be closed and how they were going to navigate down there installing the gas lines. Although there's been some issues, which I think we'll probably address at new business. That is, that project is underway. Anybody have any questions on my report or for me on my report? Okay. That takes us to our next item.
Before we jump into public session, Mrs. Connolly walked in one minute after I just announced her award. It's okay, but if it's okay, I'd like to present her with her, with her...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Connolly, for being just so wonderful for school culture and morale. And we couldn't be happier to have you with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, ready to go, Mr. Moscato.
Okay, next is our public session, session one for agenda items. When you come up, please make sure you state your name and address. And if you're representing a group affiliation also, if you're representing a group of people, if you would just state what that group of people is, okay? And it is now open to the public.
And if you don't mind, just come up to the podium. The microphone there will allow everybody watching at home to hear you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Yakub Yagnum, 6 Reeve Avenue. I want to, I have two questions. I want to first by, start by thanking you guys. I believe this referendum is really important. The safety of the building and longevity is crucial for our kids that go to school here, but more importantly, for the township. With that being said, has there been any preliminary discussions with the town or the borough about zoning or building as a permitting stage and we move forward into work? We want to ensure the work gets done in a timely manner. Has there been any discussions with the borough ahead of time on what the plans are and what to expect?
So, that planning process is something that we begin immediately if and when the referendum passes. Mr. Gianfocaro, Mr. and Mr. Gianfocaro here play a critical role in that process. They've done countless referendums for several districts. The town will be engaged, obviously, all of the vendors that will be doing the work, you know, will be engaged with the board and we'll make sure that we keep the community of, obviously, all of the timelines, how it's going to impact the kids, how it's going to impact, you know, school. But to this point, that sequence has not been discussed. I don't know if you guys have anything that you'd like to add?
No, other than as Mr. Hageman had mentioned, once the referendum were to pass, if it were to pass, we would put plans and specifications together immediately, start going out to bid and then our drawings go to the contractor who then files for permitting. It's very similar to the way we do all other projects. So, at that point, we would go, there's no reason to put design documents together at this point. We do schematic plans, excuse me, in order to get approval from the state, which we've received. And then, once a referendum passes, then the design documents get completed.
And then, second question, the contingency fund, the 8%, what happens if, hopefully there's money left over? What happens with those funds?
Well, if the, if, I agree with you. Hopefully, it's left over. As Mr. Hageman had mentioned earlier, we do not have to consume the whole bond.
Are we still able to? If you guys found more additional upgrades like lighting or other various items that would benefit?
It would need to be, so if the referendum passes, it's passing based on the question and the information that's within, within that question. We can't use those funds to do a project that's not inclusive. Now, that being said, you know, if there's something, so restroom renovations, for example, for whatever reason, in two or three years, if we need to do more than what's proposed, right, the stalls and the sinks, there may be opportunity to use money there. But our focus is to do what's needed, but to not overburden the tax buyer. And if that means returning funds or not using funds, then that's ultimately what we'll do. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just tap it?
Yep, it should be white.
It's already on, okay. Michael Asensu, 1 Highland Avenue. I'd like to go through some of the elements that are on the listing. On the rooftop repair, and this is mostly going to be for the architect and the engineer, I was involved in the original submission 30 years ago, 48, 38 years ago. And that was supposed to have like a 50-year life and it was an innovative roof, self-ceiling and all that nice, good stuff. I'm sorry it failed for the public, but at that time, I wasn't advocating for a flat roof. I was advocating and was turned down by the other board members for a pitched roof with pre-frabricated trusses. If those are still available to be acquired, made, whatever you want to call it, the life cycle costing of that roof would be extended for God knows how many more years. True or false? By breaking away from a flat roof?
Well, first of all, when we say flat roof, when we do the new roof, it will have tapered insulation. Most people would consider it flat, but it will have a quarter of an inch per foot slope.
Same as...
Right. But as far as putting on trusses, it's obviously much more expensive to do that upfront in order to put a new structure on top of the existing roof, put down some form of substrate and then put asphalt shingles down.
Well, you have to put down rails against the side of the edging. They can be steel and then the trusses could sit on top of steel.
Well, either way, I mean...
The point we're getting at is that the overall life expectancy of a trust roof to a flat roof, you get away from that annual maintenance cost.
Right, but right now, we would do a roof that would have, probably have somewhere between a 20 and 30-year life. An asphalt shingle, yes, you can get up to a 50-year roof on it. And obviously, the structure is going to last for much longer than that. But it's the roofing material that we're, you know, comparing an asphalt shingle versus a built-up roof or an EPDM roof. Right now, we probably would go with a built-up roof for, you know, several reasons, but we could always do an EPDM also. And you can get up to a 30-year life on that EPDM roof.
But a GSA, asphalt, you know, shingle roof, 50-year life, it's nothing to sneeze at, it's zero maintenance.
It's not, but at the same time, at the same time, it's a lot more expensive to put in roof trusses.
That's the upfront cost.
Yes.
And so, therefore, when you extend that out for the life expectancy of that roof, it's more practical.
I didn't do a life cycle analysis of adding trusses. I did not do that.
Could you provide them that?
I could.
Could you also give them an idea as to what the meantime rate between failures might be on a flat roof?
Well, first of all, as far as failures, there's going to be a warranty, you know, given to the district with whatever roof we put down.
About 10 years?
Oh, no, no, no. Again, we can go as high as 30 years.
Versus the 50 for the...
Versus a 50 for an asphalt shingle.
Okay. All right, that answers that one. On the Hy-Vac control units, it's my understanding that you want to put rooftop units in.
We're going to replace the existing rooftop units.
Okay. Do they have to be on the roof? Because everything I've read says, if you're, first off, are they chillers or are they VRFs?
No, it's not going to be chillers. It's going to be a unit similar to what's there today, which has a compressor in it.
It's not a water-cooled unit?
No, it's not a water-cooled unit. They don't have, in order to put a water-cooled unit, we would have to now install chillers, chilled water system. It would be exorbitant to do now in the existing building.
Unless you were to do it on the ground.
Well, the chiller would go on the ground, but we'd still have to run the piping to the unit.
For blowers.
Right, right.
Just for the blowers.
Right, but we wouldn't do that for a limited amount of rooms. If you're going to run chilled water, you're going to run it for the entire building. And again, it's an exorbitant cost. Right now, the plan is to replace the rooftop units with newer units, more efficient units. And then, as far as, somebody asked about the air conditioning earlier in the classrooms, whether it be a central unit, okay? We're going to replace the existing univentilators, but they will have cooling coils in them. So, you'll get air conditioning. And with the air conditioning, you're going to bring in fresh air the way you're bringing in fresh air in the wintertime through the heating unit. That's the fallacy that most people don't understand, is that when you have a window unit, everybody shuts off the univentilator. So, you're not maintaining your proper ventilation, okay? Now, with the new system, we'll have a new univentilator, which will bring in the fresh air, similar to what you do all winter long, and it'll be done in the warmer months, but now you'll have cooling in that. So, instead of discharging warm air to heat the space, it'll discharge cold air to cool the space.
But isn't it true that if you use a water-cooled unit as opposed to what's there now, even though the initial cost is high, the cost of operation is far less from everything I've read? And I've copied it...
A BTU is a BTU?
No. No, the cost of electricity, the magnitude of electricity, the efficiency of the unit.
Again, it gets down to efficiencies. We have high-sear units today on single compressors. And today, we're using a multi-stage compressor. So if we don't need as much cooling, you know, in the shoulder season, we won't have to provide the full tonnage out of that. So there's ways to get higher efficiencies than putting in a chiller for an entire building.
The units you're talking about, if I'm not mistaken, require assembly up on the roof?
No.
They just lift it straight up?
For the rooftop units, they're going to lift it and put it in place. They're going to take the old one off and put the new one on. The, inside the classrooms, the univentilators are right now on the floor. They're going to be, again, pulled out and new ones put back in.
Now, I was looking at the Pioneer units as a sampling as to an individual room type of unit which can handle the blower section. It's basically a heat pump, air conditioning and heat pump system. But they only run like $2,000, $3,000 for material costs.
Well, I don't know. I'd be more than happy to go over with you.
You can have these.
Sure.
And give it to the board when you're done.
But the issue with this, the issue with this is it does not bring in fresh air. You need fresh air, you need ventilation. This will not do that. So what you're going to do by putting these units in, again, most people will turn this unit on and then turn off the univentilator, okay, in order to save energy. That does not meet the mechanical code. You have, and especially now with COVID, ventilation is on the forefront of everything. So this unit, if you turn the univentilator on, you're not going to bring in any fresh air into the room. You're not meeting the mechanical code. And what's, so what you can do is you could put this unit in, turn the univentilator on, let it continue to run. But now, you're bringing in, you know, 92-degree, 80% humidity into the room, and then you're fighting it with this versus putting the unit, you know, the air conditioning coil in the unit. So when the air comes into the room, it's tempered through the coil. It's dehumidified by removing the, you know, condensate through the evaporator coil, and then it comes into the room.
If I'm not mistaken, it would look similar to what you would find in like in a motel room where it's sticking a hand out in the hole.
That's a P-TAC unit?
This is, this is, we have a time limit here on each person. And you have some questions? If you want to submit them, that would be great.
I can go on with you guys, too. On the...
No, what I'm saying, your time is a five-minute time limit per person, okay? And you've exceeded that, and we're, I give you a few more minutes, but we can go on for hours if we want to go through. Your discussion is interesting. If you want to, put it in writing and send it to us, and we would send it to the architect, okay?
The last thing I want to bring out is that I understand the column called Units represents square feet in the documents that you produced?
The what?
In the Valley Road chart, you have a column called Units. Does that mean square feet?
Can you answer that, Anthony?
They are not all square footage units. For example, where we say six, like a unit of six for toilet room upgrades, we're talking about upgrading.
Six bathrooms, right, okay. Now, when you're looking at the outdoor basketball resurfacing for $57,000, I just need one more question.
No, you've got your time. I'm sorry, we don't have all night.
Cynthia, Cynthia.
You know, this is ridiculous.
Okay.
It's been 10 minutes.
$57,000 is a lot of money to resurface a basketball court that the average cost of asphalt is $7 installed with profit labor infringes. That's all I'm saying.
We have to pay what's called prevailing wage. We have to pay the union rate. We cannot, I know you can get your driveway done for a lot...
Your microphone is muted if we're there?
I know you can get a driveway done for a lot less. Unfortunately, the cost of asphalt, we're putting $10. That's actually quite inexpensive. It could go as high as 12. But, you know, we're going to, there's things that we could do. It's only a basketball court. We don't have to put in, you know, 4-4-2, you know, but we do have to pay prevailing wage.
No problem with that. No problem with that.
Okay.
Please, one more question.
No, no, no. I'm not going to be one question to death. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public? Please.
Karen Connolly, 17, Lawrence Avenue. I love the pamphlet. You said you went around to the community and distributed these. Do you have plans on distributing these anyplace else? Because I found this very interesting. Perhaps other community members would as well.
If you would see Mr. Hegeman, I'm sure he'll take care of it.
The hope is to send one home with every student. Continue to distribute in local organizations throughout the town. Put the pamphlets in the post office and the grocery stores, anybody that would let us. Just trying to get as much information out as we can. And we're in the process of designing a flyer that's more electronically friendly, right? Because you can't send out trifles through email. So we're designing one that we can start blasting out, and we're going to ask the town council to put it on their website as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, the session is, first public session is closed. That takes us to our travel and workshop reports. Anybody have questions on any of those reports? Okay, next is approval of minutes. This is for the October 19th regular and the executive. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion on the minutes? Anybody with questions, edits, deletions? Not hearing any? This is a voice vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstained? Okay. Next is administrative action items. There is one item under there. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone? Pretty straightforward. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Chauquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Pericarpio?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Okay. Next is education action items, 1 through 3.
Motion.
Second.
Was that Cynthia?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
For the basketball tournament that is listed here, is that for younger kids or the kids 3rd grade and above?
It's for middle school teams.
The middle school, okay.
Yeah, it's a competitive tournament that we've participated in all up until COVID. I don't know if it was held last year, but we didn't participate, I don't think. So we're excited to get back to competing against some other local schools.
I hate to date myself, but I remember my kids played in a corner field, so it goes back quite a ways. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Chauquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Pericarpio?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is personnel action items, 1 through 11.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question. Do we know Math Club when it would start?
I'm not sure.
I was excited to see it.
I have to speak with Ms. Borges if approved. And the hope is earlier than last year, if we are going to move forward and do the math counts program. There were benefits to it, and there were challenges to the math counts, so that's something that we're going to discuss.
Thank you.
I think one, number 11, happened after committee?
It did.
So I just want to make sure that was, we know that that happened after committee.
We're very sad to see him go.
Anyone with questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Chauquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Pericarpio?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is business service action items, 1 through 12.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? The use of facilities, the, there was the, Jen was on there, and there was the Girl Scouts and the Brownies, I think. They are all intertwined and working with all the other activities, or it's just the fact that these are held in the STEM lab?
There actually was an extra added one to it, and that's why it's on there. It's been on there prior, but a new one was added.
Okay.
And it's, they're kind of like back-to-back now.
All right. Anybody else with questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Chauquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Pericarpio?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to new business. Anybody with new business? At our committee meetings, Jen, you weren't there, but at the meetings, you had made a request about us being able to make a statement or two about, or those of us who went to New Jersey school boards to mention something about your experience there, so I don't know if, I mean, I'll start. There were a lot, I thought there were a lot of excellent workshops that I attended. I mostly stayed in the financing buildings and facilities ones. I went to a, one of the ones I went to was for the Chapter 44 implementation and what's the new rules and regs coming there. A couple of us attended the one on the referendum, right? And that was advertising and getting community involvement in the referendum. An interesting one that I attended was the school facilities planning and the state mandated long-range facilities plan. And it was just nice to see a discussion of what's on there, what it's used for, and what data that drives that and where they get their data, and it was very interesting to see how far it goes. Probably the best one, I went through, I think it was nine of them here. The one I thought impressed me the most, and it's kind of strange, was the one on legislative update. And they had two senators, an assemblywoman and an assemblyman there. And they talked, they gave some, the narrator gave a few questions and they responded. And it was great to hear their responses were so pro-education. And they were from, one of them was the chair of the Education Committee in the Senate, and the other one was the chair of the Education Committee in the Assembly. And they talked so positively about education, and they really feel that S2 has outlived itself. There was, there was a lot of discussion about S2. Not one thing positive about it, and that there were things that they felt need to be undone and need to happen quickly. But it was just nice to hear our state government talk positively about education, what's happening, what's, what's in the plans and how they hope to get rid of S2 so they could help districts like us. And the last one that, just that I'll mention, was I went to a short one given by Rutgers on their STEM and STEAM programs and what they have to offer. And they, they will, and obviously for a fee, but they will run a STEM and a STEAM after-school activities. If you wanted to start a club, they would come to the school, they would take charge of the club, they would run the club. The important thing there was you needed the facility, okay? That was one thing that you need. The other thing that they need, and I feel bad that Jeffrey Carroll left, was that they said if you are in the process of planning one, that they have a team that will come out and sit down and work with you and the architect on what they've seen work, what they see hasn't worked in schools, and give some recommendations. It's just another asset to get ideas of what you can use or not use in the STEM lab. So I thought it was, there were some very worthwhile workshops. Anyone else?
Sure. I went to a variety of them and really enjoyed most of the speakers. But one that I found interesting that I went to had to do with student representation at school board meetings. There's legislation now that it's at the high school level, you have to have student representation. And it was interesting to hear the different districts that currently do, how they present it. It was very different from district to district. There's legislation pending saying that middle schools are, quite, if it passes, would have to have representation. There are some schools in New Jersey that already do that, and I think it's a great way to really engage in some form the student body, to give them a voice. Because, you know, the kids talk. They all talk a lot, we know that. But I think sometimes they don't necessarily understand how to get the one concept into a reality. But also, I think sometimes we're removed enough that maybe we don't actually know what's important to them. So when we make decisions that affect them and impact them, it may not be ones that are important to them. So maybe sometimes we miss the boat. So I think maybe we should try to find a way to engage the students, whether it's to have the student, the middle school student government come and speak, I don't know, once a quarter, every other month, and bring up student issues so that we have an idea of what's important to them.
You know what? That was very nice during the strategic planning. Some of the students were in the planning sessions. So it was very nice to see where their mind was at. Like, and some of the ideas that they brought during those sessions, that was very nice. So that's a great idea.
I know for years, years and years, we've had, at West Morris, there were student rep from each high school. There was one from Central, one from Mendham. And it was always interesting how their opinions were different than what board members totally thought.
Absolutely.
And some of the most passionate presentations you've seen was when students got up and spoke about their ideas that they had and disagreed with the way the board was going and their persuasiveness, and actually changed the way. One of the incidents that was mostly discussed was if you were participating in an athletic sport, could you not, could you get waived at a gym as a phys ed, okay? And that went back and forth for years, and it was great to hear student, students talk about it, you know what I mean? And it was one of the deciding factors in the way the school went at that time. So I would, I don't know about, I would say right now, I would have no comment if they wanted to have a student rep sit at our board meeting. I think it's always novel to hear what a student has to think, and it's something that gives a student in a voice. And it has to be, you know, elected person, and it has to be a way for them to feed back to the student body. And I think we're small enough that that could work very easily in a school our size. When you get, you know, 1,400 or 1,500 kids, it gets hard to do that. But I have no issues with that at all. I think that's a great idea. Anyone else? Can you?
I went to a bunch of the ones that we had to do with school security and was able to see on the vendor floor how they had a lot of new technologies and things that could be implemented at the school and how a lot of them were offering, you know, we can go to the school and do a free safety audit. Of course, they want to sell their products. But it was good to see what was out there available and what other schools were doing. I also went to a couple of the STEM courses that they were doing there. And it was pretty cool, one of them, because they made us do, design a shoe from the ground up. So they gave us... So they gave us paper and some random material, materials that they found in the room, and then they put us in a design thinking mentality, where they gave us, okay, this is the priority, this is the current situation, you are designing a shoe for this individual, you're designing a shoe for this sort of situation. And then everybody in the room, we were able to come up with a prototype, believe it or not, within the 10 minutes that they gave us. So they were saying, like, when you bring this type of scenarios to the students, you know, you put them in a situation where they can think and start, you know, designing for themselves, and that prepares them to be the future, you know, engineers of the future. So it was good to see what other schools were doing when it came to that. There were a lot of cute little programs like that.
Yeah.
I'll just quickly share. So a lot of what I attended was New Jersey School Board Leadership Association meeting because they're actually collecting feedback in real time during those meetings. So at the middle and the end of every day, they meet, they talk about what's working on the floor, what isn't working on the floor, what they need to move, what sessions they need to possibly offer again, which is why you saw several repeated, and why every time you went in your app, it had to resynchronize, because they were changing the sessions on the fly to meet everybody's needs. And so they're really talking about how they can be even more dynamic with that next year.
That's great.
So any feedback on that is always welcome. And then the other one I attended that was very interesting and slightly contentious was the State Department of Education was represented on a panel one afternoon, and our representative from Sussex County was there as one of the folks on the panel. And so obviously, the biggest thing that they were talking about was the health curriculum and standards and what each district is doing about them and how that is going. And there is still a lot of tension and nervousness around that particular topic and how every area is handling it. So, you know, these are, these are real issues that all the boards are facing, and, you know, I'm glad we're out in front of that one.
I'll share first. As a pretty new board member, it was wonderful kind of participating in the gathering and sharing of ideas with our, with our group that was able to convene in AC together. That was wonderful. Workshop that stood out to me was really focused on providing for safety and security of our schools through a social and emotional approach to teaching and learning, which I thought was really interesting. I also found that the showcase, a lot of the STEM-related presentations and items on display, that was fascinating to take a look at what's up and coming in education and the future of instructional technology. And a final presentation for me, I had a chance to listen to the Commissioner provide her closing remarks, and that was on the topic of, from grit comes growth. And I thought it was a nice reflection on the challenges that our schools have persevered through throughout the past few years. Certainly, we can all relate to those challenges, either in our own individual homes or as a collective school community, and it was a very positive message about moving forward, I thought.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to add to your Chapter 44. We were actually talking about that today as well. And the state, the conversations in the state have decided, have agreed that they may not have made the best decisions with it, and they're revamping it, and they're going to have more tutorials as to how to revamp and better utilize the, what they did, you know? That's the health, the healthcare. Last year, you know, we had 2%, you know, you go up in 2% for your taxes, they reassess what you saved by switching to the package, and then they deducted that from the 2%.
Correct.
Now that the healthcare is increasing exponentially, they realize that they may have been an enormous mistake, and, and they're, you know, probably not going to be doing that again, which is really good news because we can't afford it, and that, and so they're going to be changing that process also. I don't know if that was brought up in your meeting.
No, mine was a little bit different. The session I sat through was, was more about negotiations.
Oh, okay.
It was about negotiations. Steve?
For me, the greatest thing I get out of school boards is just the collaboration, not only within our own group, but to be able to speak with other superintendents and board members throughout the entire state. You know, we, I think that we're doing great things. I think all of us have great intentions, but to get that different perspective from those different districts, it's, it's nice. It gives, allows you to take that step back and say, okay, well, what, what could we maybe do differently? Or maybe, how can this make a positive impact on our district? And just keeping that open mind. And that's, the works, I've attended a couple of good workshops. Most of them, I think, are primarily driven for board members, but that collaborative piece, I think, is the most important.
It's definitely interesting when you start to talk to people, especially because we're so small, and you start talking to people from districts that are huge. And while there are certainly different challenges, it all seems to come back, though, to money. Doesn't matter what size district.
Yes.
Whether large, small, it all comes down to, if you don't have the money, you can't make things happen. But it's certainly different perspectives of what, what is needed depending on the size of the district.
Anyone else with comments? Another short item under, under the new business. I mentioned on my president's report about that meeting with the gas company, the school officials, Brian and stuff, and we talked about what it would look like on Brooklyn Road. And they laid out a plan that sounded pretty good to us, and we left there pretty happy. I don't travel Brooklyn Road, so I didn't go on it. I didn't, I know they were working on 183. I got caught up in the traffic on that one night. And so I knew they started. And yesterday, I got, someone forwarded me some screenshots of some discussion that was going on, on social media, and it sounded like things weren't going well. So I called that person up. We had a pretty good discussion on the phone, and what that person was saying just didn't sound right. Just didn't sound right, you know? So I went out this morning, and I looked for myself, and that person was 100% correct. The, they did nothing that we discussed. Actually, it was the complete opposite of what we discussed was to be done, the contractor was doing. I came back and I spoke to Steve. Steve got off an email to the representative we had from, from the gas company, and we got back a reply, where Steve got back a reply, in essence, that said, send our apologies to the community, we're going to fix it. They were supposed to start by McKinley Street and head towards Sparta Stanhope Road, leaving that last bit before Spring Street and Sparta Stanhope Road, where there's no side streets. The object was to get to that point by Christmas, and then they would have 10 days to get from there, Spring Street, to Sparta Stanhope Road while schools weren't in session, and that would take off a lot of that traffic. Instead, that's where they started. They started there. I mean, it threw the whole plan out of whack. And she said, that will be corrected. They need a day or two to move their machines and get them towards the McKinley side of Brooklyn Road and everything else. But I still think, I still think we need to have a meeting with the chief that I think there are better workarounds and detours that could be used, or, like coming here tonight. Did anybody travel Brooklyn Road to here, to get here?
I live on Brooklyn Road, so it's been interesting.
Was it crazy that they have the road, they have the cones across in the middle of the night?
Hasn't been very organized at all. I talked to a couple of the police officers on both ends. They kind of admitted that, and they're very frustrated with kind of what's going on as well.
I think kind of what's been handed down to them and how they're supposed to try to
communicate it, but it's a little kind of scattered at this point, so.
I agree.
And then their communication with the construction guys is also, there's also, they're not all coordinated, so.
And there's just huge gaps. In other words, even though they started, let's just say they started in the wrong place, and they started down that end of Brooklyn Road, there was no reason why Brooklyn Road couldn't have been opened from 183 to 100 street.
And stuff too. Like, they did it the other day over the high school, like, you couldn't, after, 10 minutes after school, that you couldn't go get the kids. So they had to walk either the path or find another way, all the way, literally around. And they said, no, you just can't get through, you know, so it's.
And that was not supposed to be.
Right. They did say that, but.
And that's what I said. We, I think we just need another meeting with the town. Part of the problem that, that we discovered is that because it's a county road, the municipality wasn't even involved in making a lot of those decisions because it's county property. So that, that, that just broke down a whole communication piece. So anyway, hopefully, we can get together a meeting and pull that together and have the chief there and municipal and the boards, Stanhope and Lettape Valley there, present, so.
Gil, when is it supposed to be completed?
Well, that's an interesting question, because I, when I was talking to the gentleman today, boots on the ground, he said, this is going to take a couple months. And his, and he just said, it's so bony, meaning it's so rocky, you know what I mean? I honestly thought in the section where they were digging was going to be the better part. Because if you remember, they put that water line in down there, eight years ago, seven years ago, they dug it all up down Brooklyn Road, and they replaced the whole water main down there. You would think if you dug it up once, it's not going to be as rocky, but he didn't say blasting, but, you know, they're pulling out good-sized rocks and stones out of it, and it's just slow digging.
It rarely goes faster than you think it's gonna.
Pardon?
It rarely goes faster than you think it's going to.
And, and, you know, people were, my experience with the same company, my son lived in, lives in Mount Olive, and when they did Mount Olive, and they did the local streets, when they did the local streets, it was all mechanized. They had a big auger that just dug a trench two feet wide, 30 inches down, followed up by people who filled the trench with sand, followed up by the truck that had the plastic pipe on the truck, and they just rolled it down the trench. They were doing 1,000, 1,200 feet a day, you know? They're not doing that on Brooklyn Road. They'd be lucky to get 200 feet a day. Anyone else for New Business? Okay, that takes us to Public Session Number Two, Non-Agenda Items.
Old Business first.
Old Business.
Just going to jump in real quick. I can't, I distributed the finalized strategic plan document to everybody tonight. I would have loved to have it approved, or at least recommended for approval tonight, but we just got it at the beginning of this week, did not have an opportunity to thoroughly review it. My hope is that we can discuss at committee and at the next board meeting, and hopefully approve the plan at our December meeting. So if you have questions as you review, please feel free to reach out.
Sorry about that, that's all right. Mr. Old Business? Anyone else Old Business? Now it takes us to Public Session, Non-Agenda Items.
Michael Sansa, One Highland Avenue. The last time I was here, we got into conversations connected with the safety of the building, if you might recall.
Can you speak a little louder? I can't hear you here.
Sure. Last time I was here with Matt and Kim, we got into the safety of the building, how the school itself was vulnerable, and how they were trying to push it in from the other side of the building. There is that potential. There is that potential for anybody, as I stated at that time, to just walk past the building with weapons and just blow, shoot through the windows, and the kids are going crazy. Now, with this referendum that you're doing right now, considering, that was never taken into account the safety of the children when it came to the violence that's out there in society. $3 million for an air conditioning system is interesting, but maybe one and a half million would have gotten you safety for the children. The second point that I'm bringing out was also the fact that I referenced, and the superintendent had indicated that he was, he was in the preparation stages of fulfilling the March 2021 mandate for diversity curriculum. Other people call it the critical race, critical race theory stuff. And how's that stand?
That curriculum was approved at our October meeting. We held a community forum that was online, and I did a presentation at the October board meeting as well that was, was pretty well attended. You can view, I believe you can view other curriculum. I distributed it throughout. If it's something that you'd like to take a look at yourself, I can, I can send it to you directly.
Okay. And obviously, the, the parents in the town has access to the actual curriculum and all of the textbooks that will be going with it.
A lot of the, a lot of the materials that we're using to implement are, are being created on the ground by, by teachers and by our administrators. The, the main component that I feel confident in is that we have experienced personnel related to the content working with the kids. So in the areas of social, emotional, we have our guidance counselor that's working with the kids. Our teachers are working with the kids on the basics, the basic health information, don't smoke, don't do drugs, that they've always, you know, participated in, is the classroom teachers, and our school nurse working with our students on anything related to reproduction, reproductive system, human bodies, et cetera.
That's the health portion of it that was back in 2019.
I'm sorry?
That was the health portion that was back in 2019 that the state mandated. But I understood that the diversity issue had to include superiority based upon race.
That's not true.
That's not true.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not in our curriculum.
Okay, that's good, because I know that they made you, made it flexible enough for this, each school board to set up their own curriculum associated to that law. Now, you also said that parents can opt out.
Parents have the ability to opt out of the family life portion of the curriculum, which is, again, reproduction, human bodies, et cetera.
Have you considered an opt-in that way?
It's not allowed. It's not permitted by the Department of Education.
Not permitted to opt in? Okay, okay.
It was a question that was asked by many, many districts throughout the state.
I don't know if anyone is cognizant, but are you aware that as of a couple of days ago, there were 13, because 2022 seems to be the turn-on year for all of these particular curriculums, that there are 13 school districts that are refusing to do it? So I'm assuming that each one of the board members approves of that diversity mandate by the state.
She's talking about two different curriculums. There's critical race theory, then there's the health curriculum.
There was no critical race theory in the.
They don't like to use the word CRT.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't in there. It was a one-paragraph statute that passed that talked about diversity in education. That, I don't even think there was a curriculum mandate around it.
That's the 2021 one in March.
So, that's the, that's the health one.
Oh, I know the health one is being 2019.
It was, it was.
It was initially, it was initially mandated for 2020. Due to COVID, the new mandate is, was September 1st of 2022.
Okay, all right. Well, I thank you all. Have yourselves a good night. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we turn these off, Nick? Oh, no.
We have to adjourn.
Turn yours on. Go.
So we keep going. All right, that takes us to our adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Rock, paper, scissors.
There we go.
I have Mr. Clausen to have Ms. Harold as part. Okay, great.
All those in favor to adjourn, say yes or aye. Aye. All those opposed? Anyone abstain? Thank you very much. Thank you for attending in the virtual world. Thank you, everyone.